Everybody please hand us their cell phones. Call the meeting to order, declare a quorum. You please stand for the flag, suit and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please preside over this meeting. Help us with our different opinions to give us unity. Help us to listen to each other politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work together as a unified team in order to combine our ideas for a greater outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals. May we work together on our shared mission to help, to better help the citizens of War Acres. May we always have our citizens in mind to bring about the right outcomes. May we always pray for our police officers and firefighters that go into harm's way daily. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Item number two is called the public. We had a lady that was going to be here, but I've already spoken with her. So if there's anybody else who'd like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda. Scene number, we'll go to item number three, consent docket, which is items A through K. And then the items to be, to be pulled from this.
I'm making a motion, we approve A through K.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Woolley?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Nip?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
Item number five, receiving reports from staff. Chief Petty?
Uh, just a couple of things I'll throw out. I've been reporting to you all the possibility that we were going to lose an officer to more PD. We did. He'll be leaving at the end of the month. He's been with us two years. It's Officer Daniel Gauzine. We've started accepting applications for replacing him. We will test for that position sometime next month. And we just had a second round of dispatch testing. And we have two really good-looking candidates for that. So hopefully we'll be able to hire a new dispatcher in the next couple of weeks. And that'll get us full in communications.
Thanks, sir. Chief Coy?
Well, one of our fire captains that was going to retire in December moved his date up to November. And we had our first concentrated dedicated rookie training day with five rookies. So it was, it was great to cover, you know, various both medical and fire-related training all in one day. So everything's going well with us. Happy to answer any questions.
The only thing I would like to say is I appreciate you firefighters putting out the flags. That's a great thing.
Absolutely. They're happy to do it.
City clerk?
Um, in front of you, you have the six months' reports. And then also last month, Councilman Woolley asked for the categories and how they are broke down on the audit. And so that one page, that's how the revenues are broke down for each one of those categories.
Thank you, Pam. Never have seen this from any, well, I've never seen it.
I didn't forget you.
So that's very nice. Thank you. You see, going on vacation too. You get a bill. Well, I'll tell you what, you did such a great job, you take vacation then.
Starting now?
Yeah, she'll start pretty quick.
About thirty minutes when the meeting's over.
Yeah.
City attorney?
Nothing to add.
Public Works Director, Mike?
Bulky waste continues in wards three and four. This week is Ward three, have it out by Wednesday, tomorrow. Next week is Ward four. On item eight, on the condemnation of the house, there was a large number of bees in a tree, maybe thirty or forty thousand. And so we had those removed by a professional. They got most of the stings, but, um, so that was, that was removed last month. Also, we had our fuel tested and cleaned. We found some rust in the unlit particularly. And so they typed, so they tested it for biocides. And the diesel at the, the, the police department diesel was clean. It didn't have any microbes in it. There was some indication of microbes in one at, at the yard, but they, once, once you have it, they say it will still test positive even though they're, they've been killed by the biocide. So anyway, there's a fuel report, our fuel's clean. And Cheryl's been doing a great job, starting on page forty-one. She's keeping after the weeds and grass, so she's got a tough job, so.
She did a great job on the bees, too.
Yeah.
I guess the tree had like four foot of honeycomb or something in it.
That's a lot of bees.
It's a lot of bees.
We all got honeycomb. Cheryl brought a tummy up here and all the girls got a piece of it.
City engineer?
Craig Wallace is out this evening with a conflict, but he did want me to note that the MacArthur widening project will begin construction actually on Monday is the scheduled start date.
And send my notes for later, but we will be putting the signs out tomorrow. So that lanes will be narrowed down, so.
Say that again.
We will start narrowing down the lanes tomorrow. The signs will be going out.
What we're going to do, in sections, or we're going to narrow all of it all the way?
Apparently they're going to do a lot of it all the way, but it'll be done in, it'll actually be done in sections, so. Uh, how about project planner?
Um, nothing really to add other than what's in the agenda items tonight from a planning side.
Troy, you got anything for us?
Just a quick update. So, police station, things are moving along pretty good. Recently completed, we've got some sidewalks that are done now, wall tiles, some of the interior finishes, epoxy flooring, ceilings, lights, millwork, carpet and sod. So it's coming to kind of the end here. Obviously, the site work is, is wrapping up with fencing and so forth. This week, they'll, they're working toward final painting, toilet accessories, punch lists. We've got a punch list scheduled for this Friday as a walkthrough with the staff. And so we'll be walking through, just making lists for them to kind of finalize everything next week. Uh, so final work on mechanical electrical plumbing work as well as generator startup. So that's kind of the work that's been done and the work that's going to continue to finish up here in the next couple of weeks. Financially, there is no change, well, we, we approved a, a small change order and a deduct last month. This, later on in the agenda tonight, there's going to be a, a change for additional signage, or signage, I guess, not additional signage, signage in the lobby. Uh, that was asked to be a part of the Lingo project rather than separate it out from the exterior signage. Uh, so that'll be on the agenda for later this evening. And really, that's about it on the police station. So like I mentioned, punch list this Friday, wrapping up next week. Uh, the intent is for Lingo to be able to turn that project over to the city on August 2nd. Any questions on police? Nothing from you? And then on fire station, so we're still continuing on some of our work with Lingo construction for RFI submittals and shop drawings. Recently completed work, finalized the balance of the remaining storm sewer work, the building pad excavation, the existing building facade repair where the tie-in was to the existing fire station, building up the, or setting up the building pad and the footing excavations. As far as work coming down the road, they'll be pouring footings, doing the under, continuing the underfloor plumbing and electrical. Uh, they'll be getting ready to floor, pour the floor slab. And then as soon as that's done, after a period of, of curing, then the metal building steel will begin to start being erected. So financially, no change other than the deduct change order from, the, the additional deduct change order from last month's approval. Uh, so no change in finances from the last month. And there is, the only potential change is having to do with the sanitary sewer utility revisions, which are, we talked about last time, are going to be paid through the sewer repair fund. And everything, weather pending, right now, they've lost, I think, a week to rain. But right now, their tracking still to be done before the end of the year for fire station, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for fire?
Your meetings are getting shorter, though.
Say it again?
Your meetings are getting shorter.
I know, just down to two projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, final public hearing discussion of possible action, use subjects to review on an auto sales at fifty-nine thirty-two Northwest Thirty-Ninth Street. Motion going to public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, just for the minutes, the applicant is present.
Correct.
I'll make a motion. Any public hearing?
I'll second that.
Nip, good. Evans?
Yes.
Nip?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yay.
Woolley?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
I'm trying to try to pronounce your name.
This is Aiden, I'm on the side. He's, he's stuck in the traffic, so he's coming as soon as he can, but I can, go ahead and start.
Okay.
If you'll let me.
Sounds great.
Um, so...
I'm sorry, can you just get closer to the microphone for us?
Oh, yes, sure. Um, so as you see, the, our property, we have a, there are three existing buildings in the property. And then the, the north one, it's the existing watch store. And then we are trying to get a permit to rent it as a car lot for the, those two existing buildings.
She did a good job. You're fired.
I'm very sorry, yes. I got, I was in Tulsa, I got stuck in traffic. Okay.
So we just got started, so.
Okay.
She's talking. First thing I want to have you promise that you're tearing down the twenty-foot wall.
Yes, um, so where are we at?
You can start from the beginning.
Okay, so we purchased Gary's salvage yard. We are not interested to do anything else, you know, salvage work there. We want to turn it into a, a small dealership, remodel it, spend some money on it, you know, make the place look good. We do have a dealership down the street, it's called Melrose Auto. We, we just done a new construction on the back as well. We trying to make it look like that, you know, very decent and nice. And, uh, in future, we were planning to put an eight thousand a square foot shop in the strip on the, behind the property.
But that's not part of this project.
No, no, not right now, in future. Pretty much it so far.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, to that point, one of the uses that is proposed on the drawings is a auto repair. The only thing before you is auto sales. If they want to use the property for auto repair, that's also a use on review, that they would have to come back before, before the planning commission.
Sure, I understand, yes.
We talked about that in the planning commission.
Yes, we did.
I had a question. Are you planning to leave all the existing buildings in place?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. What about the retail shop up in the front? Is it going to stay?
Yes, the watch store, yes, it will.
It's going to remain what it is for now?
It's going to stay just the watch store, yeah.
So if it's a car dealership, where are you going to put cars that are for sale? There's no, there's no parking in front except for the watch store parking lot.
The watch store parking lot is going to have few parkings in the front of it. And for the car lot, if you pay ten, on the, one of the buildings, on the left-hand side, it's a warehouse type of deal, you can put up to twelve cars inside of it. And on the, on the outside of the property, I, I think you can put another maybe fifteen.
That'd be the west building?
Yes, the west of the building, yes. It says Suite A. It won't be a huge dealership, it's going to be like maybe around, you know, twenty-five dollars max out, including that warehouse for the parking.
And you're going to, and you're, it's your car lot, I mean, it's...
No, I'm going to lease it out.
You're going to lease it to someone for specifically a car lot?
Yes, sir. And they cannot exceed that amount, you know, for the parking.
Okay, right. That's all right.
Question. The, where you have Suite A, Suite B, uh, C, what's the distance between those two buildings? Looks very narrow, like you barely get a car down there. I, I, I haven't been to the property because when you drive by, they got that chain across it anyway.
Uh, it's ten foot between the buildings.
It's about ten foot.
Any?
Plus and minus ten.
Ten feet.
Ten feet?
Yes, sir.
Is, is the suite C and is it existing building?
Yes, sir, it sure is.
I see it marked existing building on the top. The others are designated suites and so forth, but I don't, I can't remember. I've been through there many years ago, I don't know which buildings are already there.
Sure, it's all existing.
Oh, okay, all this is existing, okay.
Except for the big, the one...
The big eight thousand a square foot on the...
At the bottom of the new proposed in the future, in the future. These buildings are all existing, and there's ten foot. Okay. Uh, Chief Coy, question.
That took my question.
Ten feet, can you get a fire truck down there if there's a fire in the back of, uh, Suite C, let's say?
He's not here right now, he just walked out a minute ago. He'll be back.
Oh, okay. I'll hold that question, but I'm concerned about getting a fire truck down there. And, and right now, I assume there's an open field or something coming off Thirty-Eighth?
Yes, sir.
And a fire truck could come in there to get to, I'm talking about auto repair Suite C.
Sure.
Or the very south end of B.
Yes, sir.
Or a car, car fire in one of the other parking lot, uh, places there. I just, and if you build that future strip mall, but I hope you do, uh, you can't get a fire truck in off Thirty-Eighth that's going to have to just come in on, and back out on So that was my question, is if they can even get a fire truck down through that thing. I know it's existing, but we got off a big fire truck. Hey, chief, have you seen this on the car lot?
No, I know where you're talking about, but I haven't looked at the...
She's got you one there. What I just wanted to know is can you get a fire truck down a ten-foot space? There's a ten-foot space within those buildings, can you get a fire truck down there?
Yes, you could. We can get one in eight foot, six inches, but...
It's tight.
You got a little rubber, little...
You can't open the door?
Don't scratch the paint.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to say...
I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just concerned about the fire. Go ahead.
I don't, I don't want to say it's like the wrong question, but we, we try not to drive onto people's property in general. So I can't exactly place this because I wasn't prepared for this question, but most of the time we would park on, say, Thirty-Ninth Street, or on Hammond, or on Fiftieth Street.
Right.
And set up a courtyard lay.
Right.
And that's what you're asking, so.
But there's no corridor here. And, and I, I know it's all sitting empty now, I'm concerned about if there's ten, fifteen, twenty employees and a fire should break out. You know, I...
And multiple cars stacked up around the front.
And multiple cars stacked up in front, and all of a sudden, two or three cars are parked there just for fifteen, twenty minutes, and you got to get a fire truck down there. That's my biggest concern. Anybody else think, have any ideas on that, the fire?
Councilman, the only comment I would add, and I'm kicking myself, I'm kicking myself for not thinking of this at planning commission last week, is you're here on a use subject to review, which is about the use itself. It's a certain type of use within the district that's generally allowed, but could affect adjacent properties. There are a host of uses within the C-five zoning district that are permitted as a matter of right. One of the issues that came up at planning commission was the difference between approving the use and what will follow that from administrative staff standpoint in terms of building, renovation, things like that. There are certain codes that'll have to be complied with. I raise all that to say, I'm not sure that the fire suppression issue would be unique to a car lot as opposed to if it was just going to, if they were just going to turn this into retail shopping. If they're just going to do retail shopping, they'd just be able to do it as a matter of right. The physical layout, I don't know is going to make a difference from fire suppression because it's a used car lot as opposed to retail. And so I, I, I wish I had thought of this because that issue came up last week at the planning commission, there was some discussion about it, and, uh, staff brought up that, you know, that issue and a lot of those, a host of issues would have to be addressed during the building permit process. But I, I, I wish I would have thought of it last week to, to just kick myself for not thinking of it, that, that, that issue's going to exist no matter how these buildings are used, and not because it's going to be used as a car dealership.
Right. I was going to vote yes for the car lot. I was just, brought it up because I, first time, since I saw this picture, first thing I saw, oh, that's got to be very narrow. First thing, it's, uh, my, a week ago, so that's...
And I'm sure you trust that, uh, the vice chair, who was chairing the meeting, it did not miss his attention either.
You spotted that, too.
Uh, it, it was a subject of quite a bit of discussion last week.
Well, I think you did, too.
And I just, I just want to re-clarify, like, we face a lot of tight and tough situations throughout War Acres. For example, Cap's Middle School, you know, it's, it's extremely long hose lay, but we don't generally park our trucks right next to a structure that's on fire, that's unwise because it may collapse. So we generally park on the main thoroughfare. We set up Thirty-Ninth Street command or Thirty-Eighth Street command, and then pull out a, a courtyard lay and then pull pre-connected hose lines or just connect to that.
And to that point, one of the items of discussion was this property, as many of you may recall, has not had Thirty-Eighth Street access, even though there is curb cut there, two curb cuts. Part of what the applicant agreed to last week was that they'd take down the fence, uh, that frankly has probably been used to prevent an ice ore up until this point, uh, but thankfully, the property's been cleared out, and, and so fire would have access off of both Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Ninth.
Which, which would be good. I, I thought of this, too, because, I thought of the fire because I know repairs, they may have a torch in there, and that's where, selling torches, where you get fires in buildings. So I'm just concerned about that.
Sure, yes, sir.
Anything you do will be an improvement on the property. Oh, anything you bring in is going to be an improvement on what's there. I just, I'm, I'm just curious how you're going to...
Question for you from curiosity, is all them cars still there?
No, they all gone.
I drove by this morning.
Boy, that took a hundred years.
That was part of the close, before we closed, we made sure, we hold some money back, made sure he move them.
Wow, that's a lot of cars.
Yeah, it was a lot. It was a lot.
Any more questions? Ally, you're going to...
I have a question, just off of what the planning commission had looked at. I noticed a note that said they were going to remove twenty-foot fence. I didn't know if that was supposed to be twenty feet long or twenty feet tall.
Twenty feet high.
But neither one of them seemed to be applicable to this particular lot. So I assume all the fence off of Thirty-Eighth is going away?
Will calm down.
Okay. To open up that parking lot for future development there on that side?
I must point out, that will be done if you make that in a form of a motion. You'll need to make sure that that's included in your motion. Yes.
Because I saw that in the planning commission notes.
Right, and that's the sides, not just Thirty-Eighth Street. Stipulation.
So on one side of it is Ben's Auto Sales.
Right.
And the other side, yes, that property belonged to Gary too, but we did purchase it because I didn't want him to move all his cars next door, so he's going to be out of there too by end of this month.
So all of the, all of the twenty-foot tall fences coming down?
Yes, we have no use for it.
Right.
And we're not allowed to do it.
It's so pretty. Any more questions? Motion to come out of public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close, a second?
Evans?
Yes.
Woolley?
Woolley.
Schmidt?
He said Woolley, he didn't say yea your name.
Thank you.
Woolley. Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Yes.
Godwin?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yay.
Nip?
Yay.
Brian?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
Okay, he's working on the motion over here.
Oh, with the stipulation, yes, go ahead. We're on our motion.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we approve this, uh, item as written with the addition that all of the fence along Thirty-Eighth Street be removed and cleaned up for future development on that backside of the property.
And the street, and the addition into, the entrance and off of Thirty-Eighth Street.
That, that is for the entrance off of Thirty-Eighth Street.
Thirty-Ninth.
Thirty-Eighth is where the fence is.
Thirty-Eighth is where the fence is, but we need to have the...
There was also a stipulation that the planning commission put on to upgrade the Thirty-Ninth Street entrance.
Okay, I missed that. Yes, Woolley was upgrading Thirty-Ninth Street entrance, yes, that's exactly what I said.
And I'll second that.
As far as upgrading the entrance on Thirty-Ninth, what do we exactly have to do?
You'll have to get with the...
Making it up to city code. Yeah. To meet, to meet current city codes, yes.
Probably the width of it is the issue, yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Woolley?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Nip?
Yay.
Godwin?
Yay.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Brian?
Yay.
Mayor?
Absolutely. Wish you guys very good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Again, I'm very sorry that I was late. You're fine.
Thank you very much.
You just had, your, your wife was here, so you're good. Better halves count. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day, sir.
Ah, Donny was after me.
That's true. Item number seven, discussion of possible action concerning it based to the zoning map. Uh, Mark, you want to take, take that?
Certainly. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you are three full-size maps. Uh, this is a part of an ongoing effort that really started four or five years ago.
Thank you, Pam. I didn't want to look that many out.
He utilized CDPG block grant money as part of a sanitary sewer project. As part of that, we were able to fund and finance updating your base map, um, for the city of War Acres. We then used that to identify all the manholes that were on the sanitary sewer system. The next step was, uh, we worked with Chief Coy and the Fire Department. We were able to use that map and we were able to further define the, the GIS base map and located all the fire hydrants. Currently, the Fire Department is using, um, I guess your iPads or phones, you can locate fire hydrants using this base map. Um, subsequently to, uh, City Hall being renovated, and I'll just step over here. Your zoning map was on the wall and there were edits that were made with post-it notes based on, uh, updates based on different changes that had occurred. Your comprehensive plan, this is the actual nineteen seventy-nine version of the comprehensive plan, which, uh, symbology and mapping techniques have all changed, and, and it was not legible in some type of electronic format. And then on your zoning map, what, what was identified is you have post-it notes on all this map identifying changes that council, that planning commission and council had made over several decades. This eleven-by-seventeen printout is all of the recorded planning commission and city council changes that occurred, and we went through all your minutes and identified from two thousand and eleven forward up through, uh, the, the most recent past year, identifying all those changes. We also then sat down with city staff, Mike and Mike and the mayor and the city clerk, and we went through other documents that you had in order to update the map. So essentially, the first map, the zoning map, which is this map here, is now reflective[1695.83] is now reflective of all these changes. There's no council action or planning commission action required. From a standpoint of all the zoning changes occurred, we are just updating a map that you can then distribute out on your website and provide to developers and other people interested in the zoning. The second map is a part of the update. This was from two thousand and nineteen where your tax increment finance districts were included. So that has now been overlaid on the current and updated base map with all of your updated city limit lines. And then last but not least is an updated comprehensive plan map that actually shows updated streets, accurate streets, accurate city limit lines. And it refers back to your original nineteen-seventy-nine amendment. And then we'll have a title block that will say that we updated it from a colors, symbology, making it more legible to be used as a comprehensive plan. So with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
You have this on GIS, you want to explain that?
That is correct and we have, SRB is hosting a web portal that currently, that's how the Fire Department is accessing it. And the next stage is we will look at being able to provide, you know, the remainder of city staff and council, planning commission. You would be able to access through that web portal. You don't have to have all the GIS software. You own the, you own the base map, you own the GIS, but you don't necessarily own the software to operate it. The web portal will allow you to use it in a viewable format and not have to know the software in order to be able to do that.
In the case of the Fire Department, whenever they want to look up a fire hydrant, they can look on that map and tell them exactly where that fire hydrant is.
Is that, is this, is the GIS thing similar to what you could look at when you go to the, like the county to look up a street address? Would you be able then, so we could then be able to access that in a similar fashion?
Correct. So just like the county assessor has a regular Joe Public version.
Right.
We would have that version available. Now, the other thing is you own all of the line work and the shape files from ESRI ArcMap. So that would be a product that the city does own. Someday, you might go ahead and purchase, we might work out a licensing deal where you can have that software, where city staff could use that more extensively if they wanted to.
It's probably over fifty bucks, right?
It's a little bit more than that, but yeah, the web portal would provide pretty much everything that city staff would need now, so.
I want to make a motion to accept the updates to the zoning map and the comprehensive.
Thanks, sir.
Second.
Schmidt?
Yea.
Brian?
Yea.
Tucker?
Yea.
Montaire?
Yes.
Woolley?
Yea.
Godwin?
Yea.
Nip? Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you guys for all your work on this.
Now, new city hall, new city maps.
Thank you for the big version we can read.
I'm number eight, discussion possible action on condemnation or demolition of a house located at sixty-one oh eight Northwest Fifty-Fifth Street. Mike Woodard and Mike Turman talked about this one. I think you've all got pictures of it in your...
It's a very nice picture.
On February the first, two thousand and twenty-one, it was a notice of violation. It was dead limbs, trees, and ice storm, from the ice storm. It was abated on February twenty-second. We had a demand for payment for eight hundred and fifty dollars. So it's actually, there's one lien on there, but there's a couple abatements. We received a complaint on June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one about bees. On June the seventeenth, she also condemned it. The beekeeper came out on June the twenty-eighth and removed all the limbs. Then there was a demand for payment for six hundred dollars. A demand for payment later for five hundred dollars for tree trimming. The total abatement was one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and there's a lien on it. This person was sent a demand for payment. He was also sent a condemnation for the house. He has never responded and according to my records, he still lives there, but it's abandoned. So that's where it stands and you have pictures of it. It's pretty bad shape.
I don't see how anybody lives there. I don't see how anybody lives there.
You can't live in that house.
It's highly possible they're in a nursing home or even deceased.
That's what I'm assuming, but the records, as far as I can tell, show that he lives there. That's where the letters went.
There's no sign of him living there, though.
That's where the certified letter and that's where it was posted. And the posting's still on there. I was out there earlier today.
Do we know if electricity's still turned on at this?
I do not know if electricity. I can't see how it can be turned off, see how nothing can be turned on. And it's hard to get in there, it's hard to get around there. It's just, it's pretty rough. I mean, there's a lot of garbage in there. It's open.
Not very fair to the neighbors.
I don't suppose there's a sewer bill and it's being paid at this address, is there?
I would not know if there's a sewer bill being paid. I think everything's turned off. There's no one living there.
So I guess I'll make a motion to condemn and demolish that house on sixty-one oh eight Northwest Fifty-Fifth Street.
Second.
Schmidt?
Yea.
Brian?
Yea.
Tucker?
Yea.
Woolley?
Yea.
Evans?
Yes.
Godwin?
Upstain.
Nip? Montaire?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I'm number nine, discussion possible action on change order number three for the police station, the amount of three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-five cents for interior acrylic lettering. Mister lettering that, however, we didn't realize what we're doing. We changed over the judge's letter on the inside of the building and some of just some lettering that we left off of the project, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Who's that? Woolley?
Woolley, second.
Evans?
Yes.
Woolley?
Yea.
Montaire?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yep.
Brian?
Yea.
Schmidt?
Yea.
Nip?
Yea.
Godwin?
Yea.
Mayor?
Yea.
Motion approved.
I'm number ten, discussion possible action to authorize chief court to purchase battery-powered extrication tools based on the CIP fund, the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, as you guys know, we respond to a lot of more incidents than just fires and medical calls. We respond to vehicle accidents with injuries, structural collapses. We have to be ready for, you know, heavy rescue, water rescue, ropes rescue. Well, there's quickly becoming a new industry standard, which is using extrication equipment that's battery-operated as opposed to with a hydraulic power generator that's creating exhaust and hoses all over the place. So this equipment was budgeted for in two thousand and twenty, but with the uncertainty of the budget during that year, we've waited to even approach you on this matter. In that time, prices have gone back and forth. I haven't asked for more money, but I was, we put together a group of people and over the last year and this year, we've had a couple vehicle extrication classes. Now, this equipment can be used for many more things, including breaking into safes for the police department, taking steel doors off, bars off of windows to get into somebody that could be trapped. But primarily, they're used for, you know, lifting or cutting, spreading a vehicle off of a patient so that we can as safe as possible get them out. In January of this year alone, we, in one week's period, we could have used them and they would have been incredibly helpful. On January fourth, there was an auto pedestrian accident and the vehicle was on top of a patient. And, you know, just like any life-saving rescue emergency, time is critical. And so we had to, you have to pull the power generator out, use the extrication equipment, and the patient did not survive. Couple weeks later, we had that structured fire in the medical marijuana warehouse and just gaining access to even fight the fire was incredibly difficult where we could have cut, you know, metal off of doors much easier with the cutters and spreaders. A couple years ago, when this, when this thought of using this first came in was when a gentleman driving a pickup truck northbound on MacArthur went off the road and hit a concrete culvert right by Victory Christian. He was trapped and time was of the essence and that patient also passed away. We did everything we could as quickly as we could, but it's becoming more evident that, you know, potentially life-threatening situations, every second counts. And so I'm, with the committee that we formulated, we had a couple different vehicle extrication classes, which was great because Bob Rogers and Twister brought us cars. And then we were able to use these different companies' equipment. So we had our own training, but then we were also able to evaluate the maneuverability, the weight, just all the different functions of these different extrication equipment packages. And so I've got print-offs that I'm happy to hand around to show the one that we chose. But part of why, part of why we didn't, I don't have exact pricing. This definitely falls under the thirty-eight thousand, but part of the reason I didn't have exact pricing is because first, I wanted to present to you the, just the comparison of different companies. You know, there's one company called Multro where everything's very proprietary, including the batteries and service to it. There's another company called Genesis that uses Milwaukee batteries and we haven't gotten a formal commitment that they're not going to change the battery style. We wouldn't want to spend thirty-eight thousand dollars and then change how the battery connects to it and then our equipment become useless. DeWalt has given that commitment, which is why we went with AMC's. It also has a rotating handle and it's lit. It's made of solid aluminum, so it's incredibly versatile. We could even take it into an environment that's immediately dangerous to life and health if, say, somebody was trapped into a, in a structured fire. If there's a firefighter that called in Mayday, we could take the extrication immediately into the building with us instead of having to drag, you know, heavy equipment, tools, the hoses and everything else. There's a lot of uses for them that we potentially could find. But we got a vendor commitment, but the reason I didn't have pricing before today was because I was trying to cross compare with the HGAC list, which is like a multi-state pricing. But ultimately, this gentleman's pricing is going to be less than what's even on that bid list because this is kind of friend pricing on somebody who we've purchased things from before and he wanted to help us get what we could with the amount that we had. The last reason I didn't have something just solid to give you is because we're looking at cutters, spreaders and a combination tool, but we still haven't entirely decided if we'd rather have a RAM. You know, you can buy all kinds of stuff, but we need to be realistic when we're spending this much money on what we're actually going to use. But with battery-operated equipment, you can have three different firefighters doing three different cuts or spreads on the same vehicle at the same time where before, you could have a maximum of two tools and even then, it's still a matter of hoses that you don't want to cut or stretch out. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I've got a couple questions. First question is, where do we have a marijuana warehouse in War Acres?
Okay, so this, it was, it was at a, it wasn't, they weren't growing marijuana.
It was a marijuana products. It wasn't marijuana.
Yeah, they sold bombs and paper.
I had the same question before last night.
Yeah, it wasn't, they don't, they didn't grow in there and they didn't sell actually marijuana.
Are you checking battery recovery and battery, you know, grain downtime?
We did. We actually completely disassembled one vehicle without changing the batteries. We used three different tools and it's what we would have. Now, these DeWalt batteries are also compatible with the current battery-operated tools that we have. Even though it's a sixty-volt, there is an intelligence built into them where they'll, you know, throttle themselves down to a twenty volt, so you could use it on a sawzall, on a circular saw, on a drill and the other tools that we have, so.
Okay, what's the recovery time to bring it back to sixty?
That I don't know, but we do have here to ask for additional batteries so that there's always going to be some charging on the truck and that we can switch them out.
I had a question. Is there any kind of like a warranty or anything on this? Like in case of malfunctioning or not working or?
It is a one-year warranty. That is a good question. There is lifetime warranty on some portions of it and the vendor is close enough that we can get it serviced very quickly. We currently have equipment called TNT extrication equipment on Tower Twenty-two and even though the vendor, the repair guy's out of El Reno, it's incredibly difficult. So in addition to our collective, you know, our training that we did with it and then our collective decision-making, we also called other departments that have battery-operated vehicle extrication equipment like Bethany and The Village and just said, you know, realistically, what's the service time if you have something go down? And so that's what helped us make the choice on the AMC's.
Chief, what are you going to do with the old equipment?
Well, we have three trucks and we only have extrication equipment on two of them. So we would move the Hearst, the Hearst equipment that we got from a grant back in about two thousand and five, we would move it to engine twenty-five. We would put the TNT stuff on Tower Twenty-two and then the battery operator would be on the newest engine.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the item number ten.
Second.
If there's no other questions.
You got it, right, in a second.
No, Godwin was just got here.
So far back there.
I know.
Tucker?
Yea.
Godwin?
Yea.
Nip?
Yea.
Brian?
Yea.
Schmidt?
Yea.
Evans?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
I'm number eleven, discussion possible action on appropriation of funds not already appropriated in the CIP fund for the purchase of one EpiTide digital recorder, logger, and I'm not going to read all of it, new Dell desktop computers and Dell top computer servers with storage backups under state contract, not exceed twenty thousand dollars. Total amount of appropriations, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five and authorized chief to purchase the items. I'll let chief Patty finish this.
What's wrong with me?
Now, chief.
Ask for money and I choke.
You got somebody besides you can do CPR?
Yeah, really. These are, wow. Okay, as I put in my memo to you guys, these are items that we wanted to buy for the new police station.
Do you need to get financial balance sheet?
Yeah, we're good.
We're going to have another one come back.
That we had hoped to take most of them out of the technology or building funds, out of the bond. And as I put in the memo I gave you guys, the last time we did a bond review update, we cannot guarantee that that money's going to be in the bond. A lot of this, I thought, as a backup, I could take out of nine-one-one, but if you saw the memo I gave you, we've run into another problem we're trying to deal with involving the handheld radios in the building. So we're trying to resolve that. We've got about thirty-nine thousand in nine-one-one right now, which should more than cover that problem. Whenever we can figure out what it is, it'll have to come back to you for approval to resolve that. Bottom line, any bond money that is left, at the end of the day, we can reimburse the CIP funds, whatever we can get out of the bond. So I'm hoping still to get some of this out. The biggest thing that we were hoping to get out of the bond was the camera system has stuff that's part of the building and there's about seventy-three thousand dollars worth of the camera system, which is your next item, that we really were hoping to get out of the building, that we're still hoping we'll get that much money back as well. So that's kind of where we came down to at the meeting that we had over the bond. Mayor and I were talking about how we could fund this if we didn't have bond money available. And again, quite a bit of it could have come out of nine-one-one money until I ran into the other problem. As you can see, we're asking for about fifty-five thousand dollars, where I've got almost forty in nine-one-one money that could have bought some of this. So unless somebody's got any questions, that's kind of where we are on it. The digital logger, if you're not familiar with that, that's what records all of the phone and radio traffic. The one we have in the current station was at the end of its life cycle last year, but we opted not to replace it. We opted to just wait and buy a new one for the new building. The same thing with the computer servers. They're two years beyond their life cycle, but we wanted to hold off and just start off afresh with new servers in the, in the new PD. The eleven computers are because we are now going to have an actual workspace for all of my supervisors. Right now, they're having to do a lot of sharing. So each one of them will have a computer that we haven't had before plus we're able to put computers at workstations that we've added to the building for the patrol officers. We've added a couple of extra report rooms for them that we didn't have before that are going to need computers. So again, unless somebody's got a question on some of this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appropriation of funds for the digital recorder, logger, the desktop computers and the monitors, the Dell computer servers, for the total amount appropriations of fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize chief to purchase those items.
I'll second that.
Nip reached it. Schmidt?
Yea.
Nip?
Yea.
Brian?
Yea.
Evans?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yea.
Tucker?
Yea.
Woolley?
Yea.
Mayor?
Yea.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
I'm number twelve, discussion possible action to authorize chief Patty to purchase a complete new camera system to include in-car cameras for all Martinez body cameras, for all officers, necessary computer download and storage capabilities from watch guard. I'll let chief Patty finish this one if you can.
Yep, we're much better now. This is our camera system that we budgeted in the CIP at the beginning of the year. As most of you probably are aware, we've had cameras in our cars for years and years and years. The current camera system is, well, we purchased them during Mayor Woolley's term. We had money available and we put cameras in the cars. They are well past their life expectancy. I was telling Mayor Mickley the other day that... I was telling Mayor Mickley the other day that roughly 10 to 15% of the body mics work some of the time. And we can't get them fixed. They're they're obsolete. The company that that we got them from doesn't even have anybody that has the ability to work on them, much less the parts. So we had planned all along to upgrade the system and finally go to body cameras, which we have not had in the past. You're all aware of what is going on in the world this day in my world and our officers love their cameras. We love the cameras. We're happy to be able to upgrade the body cameras. This particular system, the body camera itself will serve as the microphone for the main car system. They activate the car system. The body camera comes on automatically. It's just a great system. This system also integrates into the building. Our interview rooms will have this system in it. So when we do interviews, officer goes in, keys in that he's in there using the interview system. It'll record directly into the system at the station, which will be a nice upgrade to the current system we have on interviewing. It'll give us more interview rooms. It's just an overall modern, up-to-date, outstanding camera system.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Before we vote, who's going to do the install? Are we going to handle the installation in-house?
What on the cars?
Just a procedural issue.
A little louder. I didn't hear the question.
Well, before a question can be asked, since there's a motion on the table, there either has to be a second.
I thought there was a second.
I didn't I didn't hear one, so never mind.
Turn your radio down, man.
Who made the second? Because I missed it. Okay.
No, I didn't make the second. I didn't make the second. I asked. He asked a question and I was asking, what did he ask?
They just swapped name tags because that's usually what happens.
So the question I asked, the question I asked Councilman Woolley is the installation on the cars for the camera systems, is that going to be handled in-house or are we going to have someone do that?
It's going to be handled in-house. We're going to send Lieutenant Goodman to training that they're providing us on how to do the installs. There's a radio shop here in town that does the installs, but they wanted like $4,000 a car times 23 cars.
Right.
So for that kind of money, I said, no, thank you. We'll just do it in-house. It's going to take us just a little bit longer, but the other good thing about doing it in-house, if something trips up on them, Lieutenant Goodman can probably get them back in operation without us having to take them to the shop.
Because he needs something else to add to his list.
Yeah, he doesn't have enough to do.
And forgot the follow-up. I lost it. Okay. That oh, I remembered. Do we have enough, I'm assuming we have enough vehicles to cover when the whatever vehicles get the installation done to cover that downtime?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, we've got backup cars for when any whatever unit's down. I've got three available backup units so that nobody's ever out of a car.
Okay.
While we take out the old camera system and put in the new ones.
Perfect. Thank you.
Godwin.
Yay.
Bunther.
Yes.
Woolley.
Yes. Yay.
Nip.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Evans.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you again.
Item 13, discussion possible action on nomination for mayor of Jason Spriggs, Ward One, to the vacant at-large planning commission seat. Obviously, he's not here tonight. I thought he was going to be. Obviously, I didn't do a very good job communicating to him unless he thought it was seven instead of six. I'm not sure which. But anyway, he he's a neighbor of mine. He's a very smart, very intelligent guy. He's 27 years in the military. He's still still working for the military through this other private company. He's in supply chain operations, he's supply chains operation manager at Tinker. He's very smart, very active, and I think he did a great job on the planning commission.
And for what it's worth, he attended our commission meeting last week.
He did commit, and and I think everybody liked him very.
Does he have to be here to be?
I don't think so, but.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I read his resume.
You've got his resume in here.
I read it.
I'd like to make a motion for Jason Spriggs to be the Ward One Planning Commission seat.
I'll second.
At-large.
At-large, yeah.
He just happens to be from Ward One.
From Ward One, okay.
And he's second in Pat. Schmidt.
Yay.
Woolley.
Yay.
Evans.
Yes.
Bunther.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yes.
Nip.
Yay.
Godwin.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Motion approved.
Item 14, discussion possible action to receive and attempt and accept temporary construction easements for sidewalks and driveways. This is our right-of-way project for our sidewalks and basically on 50th Street. All these have been donated. We've got one more that we added that'll be on next month. There's two more that we haven't gotten yet. They're next door neighbors. I think they're owned by the same, they're actually different owners, but they're the houses have all been have the same veneer foot across the front of the houses and so they're obviously related somehow. We cannot get ahold of them. I sent them a letter yesterday to see if I can get them to contact me. Craig and I went out there yesterday to try to contact them. We did get the other the other one, one of the three that we had left out. But anyway, this is the last five. They're all donated and we'll have three more coming next month.
I make a motion to accept easement donations.
Thank you.
Second.
Nip.
Yay.
Godwin.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Bunther.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Woolley.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Approved.
Item 15, questions, comments from the council. We'll start with Jim Bunther.
No questions. I just again like to go back and thank city, all the city workers and Chief Coy and Chief Patty and the excellent job you guys are doing. I just want to say thank you.
Mr. Wolf. Well, the first thing I was going to do with our new planning commissioner was to thank him for his service. So if he's watching or just thank him for his service. How many years? 20?
27.
27. God bless. Anyway, I just want to thank all the councilmen for coming and thank all of our city employees. And I really appreciate these large maps. That's that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I I concur with Pat. Thank you, Mark, for large maps that made that easier to pass tonight because we could actually tell where the lines were. And I want to congratulate Chief Patty on the new building he's getting ready to move into. And I'm looking forward to our open house whenever that is so we can come see this new equipment that we've been stacking in there. I've had several people ask me what that building is because we don't have any signings up on it yet. They know it's something important, but they don't know what it is.
We've had a sign up there on the corner since it started.
Yeah, but they they're obviously not reading it, so. Hopefully, they won't find out what it is the wrong way. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, especially my trashy women over there. I appreciate you coming and everybody for their support of War Acres. It's an exciting time. I think it's really neat seeing how everything's coming together. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I've got nothing today.
Nothing. Mr. Tucker.
A couple of things, actually. The Chief Coy, having been a firefighter in my past, I feel for everything you said. I could see in your eyes and in your words about how committed you were to the preservation of life and needing this new equipment. I'm glad we could get that for you. And I've actually used those Hearst tools and the hydraulic lines laid out trying to run, you know, the snippers and the spreaders. I'm glad they had, I wish they had batteries back when I was doing it. It I'm glad that we got to approve that and I look forward to next year to maybe do it again for one of your other trucks.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And also, I I'm not trying to call him out for everything, but I wanted to say what the mayor had said to you earlier. I appreciate the firefighters getting out there and putting the flags up for the Fourth of July and Flag Day, I believe, so.
Thank you.
Also, I appreciate the info on the newsletter for the home businesses, people trying to run businesses out of their house. I appreciate that information because I've got one guy that calls me a lot and I'm trying to get him happy.
It's a very uphill battle. We're working very hard on it.
And I was thinking about it. I believe, you know, some of them popped up because of the pandemic. Maybe people got laid off from a brick and mortar job and they got home and they didn't know what to do and they started working out of their house. And I'm I certainly empathize with that, but you know, I guess we got to, you know, we got to do the right thing. That's and I appreciate all the work everybody's done. That's pretty much all I had. Sorry to.
What are you sorry for?
I'm always sorry. I've been married three times. I'm always sorry.
What'd you say? I didn't hear you.
Nothing. No comment.
I'll put that in the minutes, please. I got I got a couple of things. So with the budget and adding in an additional 50,000 into the budget for parks for next year, I think it'd be really good because my wife and I have been looking at things since I'm tasked with that project. Man, stuff's expensive for parks and we got, you know, some small ones here and there and I just encourage, you know, we want to continue to make War Acres a family oriented place and bring in younger families and just want to continue that so we can keep building up that war chest for for our kids here in the city. And also, I don't know if you guys, so I know we have the award. I don't see it in here. It was in the other chambers for, you know, citizens, our trashy friends were named on that at one point in time. But have you guys heard of City Center here in War Acres? So I know the police and firemen, they do a ton of stuff. I got to interview the founder, Jed Chapel, and I asked him some stories about what he loved the most about being there and having this urban ministry here in here in War Acres. And he said, one of the things is that whenever kids get in trouble, the police bring the kids to the center if they know they're involved and they can resolve that issue instead of taking kids to juvie. So it's rehabilitation. It's a community. Jed has an outstanding story of how he went to prison and, you know, he wished he had a place. That's the reason why it exists. You know, firefighters and, you know, one of his favorite things is whenever the fire truck took Damien. If you guys go down MacArthur, you see he has cerebral palsy, I think, but he just kind of hobbles down the road. I take him over there from the coffee shop all the time and those are some of his favorite things about being in War Acres and having the small town feel and the things that the police and fire have done. And I've engaged with him a ton. They do back to school programs. They're doing a big giveaway and I think that it is such a light in our city that it needs to be recognized and and awarded for sure. And if there's anything else out there, I don't know how many people really even watch this. But if there's other community things, if there's other nonprofits that are functioning out of War Acres, we need to know about them because we need to highlight those things. And the last thing is are we still, is the program that Doc helped set up at PCO still going on?
We'll start that again next year.
Okay.
They didn't want to do it during the COVID.
Yeah, I didn't figure so, but I just wanted to, so that was just kind of a question I had because it came to mind. So but again, you know, police, fire, city, Mike, just everybody engineering, everybody that takes care of the city, Pam. Y'all have the unsung heroes of a city and I really appreciate all the things that you do. And I call the city a moor because I had an issue down there and they have maps that are out of date by 10 years. So I really appreciate that we have new maps. So you might want to call city a moor. No, we want to keep them here.
Well, he's I mean, he's just subcontracted out. Go make some money.
The question.
Yes.
You said add 50,000. So like if we spend the 50,000 this year, do you want 100,000 the next year? Because we would put 50,000 in again. Are you asking for it to be 100,000?
Well, we probably need, so because things are going to cost in between 50 and 100 to like really do something big, so. Yes, as you look at, yes. Splashpads are expensive.
Splashpads.
Just wanted to make sure I got it right and I didn't just put 50 and we got a budget and you're like, I can only do an additional 50.
We need additional. So that's just something that. Asking for a bill.
You know, Roger, you said it. My daughter asked the other day, how come there's not a splash pad in War Acres? You know, it's like, because it costs money. I mean, it's like. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying. They're more, a lot more than 50,000.
Then insurance.
Well, and you know, one of the other things too, so actually in the city of Guthrie, we had a really small, my kids have been to every single one in the entire metro plus and the one in Guthrie is their favorite and it's not really a whole lot, actually. It's not that big extravagant stuff that you see all over the place. So it doesn't have to be, you know, way extravagant. So we'll look into that. Boom. You know, my man. That's it.
That's it.
That's enough, right? Yes, I farted.
Apologize.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Nip.
I was waiting for his last comment.
Comments.
Only thing I have is is on that extra park stuff, Mike. Could you put a park bench in each one of the parks, preferably under a shade tree? As a grandparent, great-grandparent taking my great-grandkids to the park, I'd like a place to sit, you know.
What's your name on it?
Huh? No, I do not want my name on it. I don't want my name nowhere near it. I just.
A little placard that's a memorial.
Facing a playground where I can watch the kids.
You don't want to say in memory of.
Yeah. Other than that, I appreciate all the city staff, police, fire, mics and Pams and everybody. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. I guess I got a few things to say. Again, welcome Jason Spriggs, Patrick Corey and John Downs to the planning commission.
Oh, timers on.
I'm very glad we have a full committee against. This is very important. We're leading the Bethany War Acres Library read-off. Great job to everybody that checked out and read books. This is our bragging rights over Bethany. The Super Mercado at 36th Street is making progress, slowly but progressing. We have two businesses coming beside the dentist's office that I hope I'll be able to announce the next meeting. There will be fast food restaurants with the third one coming soon at that same location. One's brought in plans, but has not to be identified yet. The space between Zaxby's and Whataburger should be announced soon. Plus the space beside Shifley's Donuts should be announcing soon. And the space is also owned by the dentist and I just heard today that we may have something going with the Golden Corral. So making progress. Meeting with retail strategists here at City Hall in the morning. I met with them this afternoon. See what they have for us and we'll give you an update next month. We're making progress. Now, the COVID is somewhat behind us. It's helping us a lot. I just hope it didn't come back and bite us again. Starting tomorrow from 47th Street on MacArthur, you will start to see lane closures. This area will be slowed down to 25 miles per hour for the safety of the workers as well as the people driving through. There will be areas with no left turn to keep traffic flowing. Just keep remembering that the inconvenience is progress. I will probably miss most of September as I'll be having a knee replacement that's badly needed. John Nip will be your contact for the month of September. It's just a warning. I will be at the August meeting, but surgery is set for September 7th. John, you'll need a full pen of ink and need to keep your phone charged. I'll be available for phone calls and to sign papers after a couple of weeks. I'll be out of the office for four to six weeks. I'm looking forward to our State of the State meeting Friday. As usual, I appreciate all that you do for the city. I know it's the pay that keeps you guys coming back every every week, every month. As usual, I send that all. As usual, I appreciate what all you do for the city. I know that's the pay that keeps you coming back. I just said it. Pam, have a great vacation. Make sure you keep your phone on.
Be back before September.
I'm trying to call you more than a few times a day. Thank you, Chief Coy and the Fire Department for putting out the flags again. And I need a motion to adjourn. May I? May I say something before we? Yes, you may. Do the motion? I would I would like to ask if it's okay for Mike Turman to come up with a three, four-year plan or two or three-year plan on putting items in the in the budget, 50,000, 100,000, whatever, to kind of remodel that down there. If anybody's ever walked in there and if anybody's ever been to that big bay where we bring the garbage trucks and you go in that bathroom back there, shame that we have a building like that.
Precedent.
And I think I would just like to see something, Mike to come up with some figures and put something in the budget this year if it's just a start. Thank you.
I got a question. Where's down there?
Where's down there?
Public Works. Oh, did I?
Yeah, you didn't say where. You just said down there.
You just said down there.
I I apologize. Public Works area, the whole thing, offices, restroom, restrooms, especially that restroom. especially that restroom down there where the mechanic works most of the time. And it's just like, it's just put together with cardboard, I mean, it's just pathetic. Anyway, I would like to see something added to the budget out of CIP, thank you, Mike, if you do something like that, I'd appreciate it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I didn't have a second.
Oh, I'll second.
Nip? Schmidt?